Okay, I'll call the other Sparks City Council Meeting of March 27, 2017. The roll call, please.
Mayor Martini, absent. Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, um, invocation speaker is Pete. I don't see Pete. Oh, there he is with the... How did I miss you?
I know how you did.
Pete Bossler with the Crossroads Assembly of God. Come on down and lead us in prayer. If everybody will stand, please.
God, this is a great day. It's a great day for our city, just because you've given us an opportunity to just live in a wonderful place. And I think that your blessings on Sparks have been tremendous. And now I pray for a double portion of blessing in our city council, give them great wisdom. Thank you for a good police department, a good fire department, and all the city services that are so wonderful. Surround us continually with your wisdom and your revelation and your knowledge. I mean, your blessing beyond this meeting we ask in your mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, Pete. If you'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Abbott, would you lead us?
Yes. Please show me the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public comment period. Just, um, just so you know, our beeper is not working, so we'll let you know when the three minutes is up. You'll still get three minutes, so. So anybody wishing to speak, I do have some cards here. Anybody wishing to speak, please fill out a card for me. I've got two names, Ray and Joe. Did you want to wait till 9.8? Okay. Yeah. Okay, anonymous, come on up, please. How are you? Welcome. You have three minutes.
As our investigation... Is this on? Okay, thank you. We concluded our investigation into Heidi Shaw, the court administrator for Sparks City Council Municipal Court. And of course, you do not investigate her because you have a clause, section 3.3 of the city ordinance that says that you cannot investigate anyone in the courts unless you have an agreement by a judge. And the judge has not been approached to agree to investigate Heidi Shaw. So we went ahead. And remember, all of our costs are damages, considered damages against you as council members, so we are keeping track of all of our costs in that investigation. Our investigation concluded overwhelmingly that Heidi Shaw is destroying children's abuse evidence in court case files, which is illegal. And so we started a legal proceeding against Heidi Shaw. A child submitted, it was done in one of the child's names, and submitted to the court administration were all the documents that overwhelmingly show that Heidi is destroying child abuse evidence illegally. Within a week, the child received an order for dismissal of the case. This is very unusual. So we investigated what happened in the child's case against Heidi Shaw, and the judge never received the submission of the documents that were submitted on the child's behalf. The irony is not lost on us, that a case about destroying child abuse evidence had the child's abuse evidence documents destroyed. So, so we're pursuing. There's all kinds of legal remedies that this child can take, and the child is pursuing those. Again, it all speaks to increasing costs that you all are being held accountable for aggravating the child's damages. I also would like to state to you that Joan Newfer is the legal counsel for the judges and justices in the state of Nevada. She's a state of Nevada attorney, and she's worked for the state of Nevada as an attorney for many years. She is now an instructor at UNR's Judicial College. Prior to leaving her position as legal counsel for the judges and justices of the state of Nevada, she gave them some very wise counsel. And it wasn't legal counsel. It was just counsel, because so many judges and justices are being sued over this very matter. And a month prior to the children's abuse evidence going public, she had a meeting with the judges and justices, and she stated to them, "To get your financial affairs in order." And what she stated was to buy an umbrella policy. If you have a policy on either your automobile or your home, you...
Wrap it up, please.
Okay, I will conclude. Thank you, sir. Just a few more minutes, a few seconds. The umbrella policy, when you get sued, and you will be sued personally, you won't be sued as a member of the council, you will be sued personally, because that is what the ordinance says when you enter into an illegal contract. And so that umbrella policy will cover all of your assets, not just your home or your car, but any other assets that you have. And it's very wise advice. Thank you.
Okay, Steve Trollop, come on down. How are you? Good, welcome. You have three minutes, sir. No.
Working.
It's working. If the light's on, it's not working. If the light's off, it's working.
Okay, I think I got that.
Does that make sense?
Sure does. I just have a brief statement. I'm Steve Trollop. I'm with Deandrea Rising, representing them here today. And I'm here to answer any questions with regards to the project during the section that applies to the considerations that are going on right now with the council on the property. I also make myself available afterwards should you have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we bring it back to the council. 5.1, approval of the agenda. Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, in the interest of getting the Mr. and Mr. Duke out of here, can we move item 11, section 11, 11-1 and 11-2, to ride up after consent items on the agenda?
Anybody else? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Dare? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, number six, 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council budget and CIP workshop and regular Sparks City Council meeting of February 27, 2017. Any additions or subtractions, or Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the minutes from the city council budget and CIP workshop of February 27 and the regular council meeting of March 13 as presented.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Does anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve items 8.1 through 8.5.
Dare?
I second that.
I'm sorry, sorry, I skipped you.
You can give me the...
I skipped you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to 11.1, public hearing, consideration of and possible approval for Greenleaf Enterprises Incorporated to move a medical marijuana dispensary. Welcome, Karen.
You're throwing a curveball, Steve.
Good afternoon, city council. I'm Karen Melby. I am Development Service Manager. Let's see, which one are we doing, seven first? So this is a request before you today from Greenleaf Enterprises. They are requesting to move their marijuana, medical marijuana dispensary from a previously, a location at 1825 Freeport Boulevard to a new location at 1730. Here's the map showing that this is actually, most people would know it as the old Wendy's. This would be Rock Boulevard here in Glendale. So pursuant to NRS 453A.350, a medical marijuana establishment may apply to change its location within the same jurisdiction as its original approval. A local government may only approve this application through a public hearing, which is what this agenda item is today. It's a request in pursuant of NRS. What they're proposing, they were prop... the, um, they had, at the location of 1825 Freeport, they were approved to have a cultivation, production, and dispensary. And it did not work out with the property owner, so they have located their cultivation and production at, um, oh, the street name slipped my mind. I'm sorry. But they are, this request before you today is just pertaining only to the dispensary. As a result, the Greenleaf has submitted a new administrative review, and they were approved on March 8 of this year. This public hearing is in fulfillment of the condition of approval for the administrative review. The agenda item, this, the condition said that they had to have a public hearing, and this agenda item is in fulfillment of that public hearing. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 14, 2017. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Karen? Okay, I'm going to open this up to the public. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? How about the Duquetts? Do they want to say anything? Okay, anybody else want to make a comment? We'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I'm going to move to approve the application for Greenleaf Enterprises to move their medical marijuana dispensary.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, move on to 11.2. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, council. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Coincidentally, we had actually two applications that came in at the same time, and both of them are before you today requesting a relocation. This application is for NV Green, Inc., and they are moving, asking to move their cultivation facility from 1492 Linda Way to 1475 Heimer. You can see on here the property outlined in scion. Here's Rock Boulevard out here, and this is Heimer. So it's basically at the end of Heimer that they're asking. Again, pursuant to NRS 453A.35, a medical marijuana establishment may change its location but must be go before the local governing body for a public hearing. This request isn't pursuant or in compliance with the NRS. They were originally approved at 1492 Linda Way, and they're asking to move to this address at Heimer. They had submitted an administrative review and were approved on March 8, 2017, as one of the conditions was that they had to come before you in a public hearing. Today's public hearing isn't fulfillment of that, fulfillment of that condition. The notice for the public hearing was published in the newspaper, the Reno Gazette Journal, on March 14, 2017. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Bybee?
I had just one question. So this is cultivation only? It's not production or dispensary?
That's correct. Only cultivation.
It is production as well. Yeah, you said production. That's where they grow.
The administrative review never said that, so it's only cultivation at this point. The application never said production on it, so it was only cultivation. We only process the application as cultivation.
Well, I'm looking at what you're... Sorry, Karen.
Yeah.
Any more questions or comments for Karen? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time?
What's the difference between cultivation and production and production?
Yeah, I don't understand either.
Cultivation would be growing of the marijuana plants. The production is making like oils or food products.
Well, we'd be making oils and food products. No food products, just oils.
Are we going to do this again now, to see if you want to apply for the production?
Yeah, they're licensed separately.
They are licensed separately, so they will have to, if, their application did not include production, so they will have to apply for a new administrative review and also probably come back before you on another public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Abbott, have you already spoken?
Yeah.
Mr. Abbott?
Up to the petition, or whether you could freely continue this today and bring it all back together and handle it in one agenda item, or two agenda items, but handle it the same meeting, or you can just continue on with the production aspect of it today.
Cultivation.
Why don't we, why don't we move, why don't we move to public comment and get them down here, and then you can ask any questions you'd like? Is that, then would you?
Good idea. Thank you, sir.
Um, did I open the public comment already?
You did.
Yes, you did.
I did. Okay, it's open. Would you want to come down?
That's why I was talking.
Yeah, sorry. Just give us your name for the record, please.
Eric Shover.
I'm not really good at this. Never done this before.
It's okay. If it was an oversight, it was completely on our error. I assume the same, because when we originally had our facility, that 1492 Linda Way, it was under the same... And if we, I assumed that it would be the same thing for the site. Obviously, we mistake and missed out about you. There are two separate licenses, but I don't have the same.
So... Yeah, do you want to pull it? Do you want us to pull this, put it off, so you can bring them both back at the same time, or do you want us to do these separately, and you have to come back again anyway?
You have to come back anyway.
So you want us to go ahead and consider the cultivation aspect?
Yes.
Okay, is that okay with you, Karen?
Yeah, I was just going to say I'd recommend that too, because if he wants to start on his building permits, I can't allow him to do that until he's been through the public hearing at city council. So he could start working on his cultivation facilities and then later on start, finish up the production, which is a minor part compared to what he needs for the cultivation. So I was going to recommend, if he was going to say that, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
Well, I'm good then.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we bring it back to the council for action. Mr. Abbott?
I'm going to make a motion if we have no more questions. I move to approve the request from NV Green, Inc. to relocate a medical marijuana cultivation facility from 1492 Linda Way to 1475 Heimer Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Karen. Okay, we'll go back to general business items, 9.1. This is you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Consideration and possible approval of the ratification of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility's recommendation for a joint appointment of Reno Councilman Paul McKenzie to the Western Regional Water Commission.
Thank you, sir.
Driscoll.
I'm Steve Driscoll, City Manager for the record, Mr. Mayor, pro temp, members of the council. We jointly operate the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and part of the obligations is to have someone who sits on the executive board for the joint operating committee to actually be on Western Regional Water Commission. In the past, Mayor Martini had that position for several cycles, and during the last year in November, when there were changes by Reno's body as well as this body, they ended up appointing Mr. McKenzie as the representative of Western Regional Water. We had appointed Mr. Martini, and so there's really been no one on the commission for the Truckee Meadows Reclamation. Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Martini had had a conversations recently about the idea of Mr. McKenzie taking it for a short while and then possibly changing the interlocal agreement in the future that would rotate it rather than just a pure appointment. So this is just administrative. It does, right now, it does, we have a vacant seat on that board that has other members. This would allow the reclamation facility to have a voice, and so it's recommended that this body would appoint Mr. McKenzie as your representative from Tom Worf to Western Regional Water, and that I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Dare?
I move to ratify the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility's recommendation for joint appointment of Paul McKenzie to the Western Regional Water Commission for the remainder of the current term of April 1, 2016, through March 31, 2018.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Steve. Are you on 9.2 also?
Yes, sir.
Consider, 9.2, consideration and possible ratification of Resolution Number 3310, declaring termination of a local emergency effective 5:00 p.m. on Friday, March 10, 2017. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp, members of the council. Steve Driscoll, City Manager for the record, and for this purposes, I'm also the Emergency Operations Director as it relates to emergencies within the city and your ordinances. As your Emergency Operation Director, I have the authority, you have given me the authority to declare emergencies when they might exist, and then it takes ratification by the mayor, mayor pro temp at the time, and then formal ratification at the earliest convenience after that for the council. Once you have a declared emergency, which is what we did declare emergency on February 9, we were seeing series of atmospheric rivers, and we were seeing flooding on the Truckee River with possible flooding in our industrial and some of our residential areas. It was our second declared emergency of this calendar year. And once that's done, we have to kind of unwind that, if you will. So what you have in front of you is your ratification of my discontinuance of the state of emergency that I declared as of 5:00 on Friday, March 10. I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Mr. Dare?
With the snow and everything coming up this week, I know this is correlation because of weather, are we, because that ended on March 10, so we just have to declare another one if needed?
Mr. Dare, Steve Driscoll for the record, it is something we're watching. As you may be aware, the city of Reno has a recently declared emergency for the water coming off of the north side of Peavine, the snowmelt, which is filling up White Lake, Silver Lake, and Swan Lake and Lemon Valley. So they're working on those. So that is something that's new. Lion County is also seeing floodwaters on the Carson River. And so we, while our river water is up at the Vista Gage, it's not projected to go back into flood stage, but we're watching it. So as we have rainstorms like we've had, and we continue to have snowmelt as the temperature goes through, if we found ourselves having another near-flood or flooding emergency, we would just declare again. This allows us to close the books on this one because there's no ongoing event at this point in time.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bybee?
I'm ready to motion.
Okay.
I move to ratify Resolution Number 3310, declaring the termination of a local state of emergency.
We have a motion? Mr. Dare?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passing. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay, 9.3, consideration and possible adoption of Resolution Number 3312 to augment the FY17 budget and various funds to provide appropriations for capital projects approved but not completed. This goes back to 2014?
Couple of projects due, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Stacy Hamlin, your budget administrator, and this item today is kind of a routine cleanup to get the 17 fiscal current year's budget augmented to be able to complete projects that were approved in prior years. So attached to the item is the specific projects that we're augmenting for. But again, this is just routine cleanup. They were approved in a prior year, the budget lapsed, and now we need to bring some budget forward this year to avoid a budget violation. I'll answer any questions.
Lawson?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Unless we have questions.
I had a quick question.
Okay, Mr. Dare?
Do you want a second and then a discussion?
We can, we can go ahead. Good answer question.
On this list, does it look like we're going to be able to complete everything on this list this year?
So I get, I do request a status from the project managers, and they've provided that here. When I ask them that, they, they always say yes. And so we do take the time to bring the budget forward. But you're right, if it doesn't get done, it will lapse again, and we'll be back asking again. So I'm getting information from them that these are in progress and will be completed. I don't know, North Truckee Drain Phase 3 is so huge. I'm not, I'm not really sure if that one's going to be done this year or not. But if it's encumbered, if we have a purchase order, that budget will roll automatically. I don't need to go through this process. But when it has not been encumbered, I need to do this.
Could I direct to Steve?
Sure.
So the question for me is, is there, because we sat down and did a bunch of looking at the budget, and we did some cutting and looking at different things. Are these all the things that have been approved then that are on here? So that's complete?
Yes, Mr. Dare. Steve Driscoll for the record, everything that's on this list are approved projects that the council has funded in prior cycles. And so it's just a matter of construction cycle as much as anything at this point. So that money has been set aside to be spent on these projects only, and so it rolls through. So for instance, the North Truckee Drain, that'll be a year to 18 months. It's just starting now, so it may go through. It'll definitely go into the next fiscal cycle, but it'll drag budget with it, and it won't require these. These are ones we think we're going to get done, and then whatever reasons we don't, they're still on the list. They're still funded. We just need to drag the budget with it when it doesn't automatically drag. You'll see this on a regular basis in the spring every year as you're a member of this body.
Mr. Lawson?
Questions? I move to adopt Resolution 3312 to augment FY17 capital project funds, enterprise fund and internal service fund budgets. I've got to get them all, right?
Yeah.
I kept reading, oh, I better get them all, all those budgets.
Mr. Dare?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 9.4, consideration and possible award of 2017 curb, gutter, sidewalk, and pavement rehab project bid number 617-010-PWP-WA-2017. There's a test on this afterwards. -079.
Good afternoon, Mayor, pro temp, members of the city council. I'm here today presenting for your consideration and possible approval of the 2017 curb, gutter, sidewalk, pavement rehabilitation project for a contract to Spanish Springs Construction in the amount of $637,441. If you will refer to the map that's up on the screen. This project involves a complete rehab and replacement of curb, gutter, sidewalk, driveway approaches, and asphalt on K Street, L Street, and M Street with the limits of Stanford Way to Perbasco. The project came apart, came together as curb and gutter has deteriorated over time, and the runoff of stormwater is being restricted. With the replacement of the curb and gutter comes the full replacement of the sidewalk adjacent. January 25, the city received three qualified bids, with Spanish Springs being the apparent low bidder. And I'm here today for your consideration to ask any questions, answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I want to move to approve it.
First, I'm ecstatic to see, you know, some, in my own words, some rejuvenating of that. It's over, well-needed. So I move to approve the 2017 curb, gutter, sidewalk, and pavement rehabilitation project contract to Spanish Springs Construction in the amount of $637,444.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seeing none, please vote. All in favor, say aye. Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. The pivot. Okay, 9.5, consideration and possible approval of the 2017 street rehab, Unit 3, bid number 1617-014-PWP-WA-2017-108 contract. And I'll just say, we'll see your Nevada construction.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. This item is for your consideration and approval of the 2017 street rehab, Unit 3 project to Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $1,309,007. This is a part of our city's transportation system pavement management program. It has been identified in CIP and through our five-year program. On the screen is a map of which areas are included in this project, and the project scope identifies removal and replacement as needed of rundown curb and gutter, driveway approaches, sidewalk, ADA ramps, and the roadway itself. The city received four qualified bids with Sierra Nevada Construction being the lowest complete bid. I'm here for your approval and to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Mr. Dare?
I have one quick one, just with West Coast paving. Reading on the notes and things of that fashion, I had, are they aware what they did and didn't do correctly?
Yes.
Are we going to have conversations later with these guys, or are they?
No, at the time of bid, as soon as our purchasing department did the due diligence and we found the error, we were in contact with them. They were acknowledged that it was a mistake on their part, and yes, they have been aware.
Mr. Abbott?
I just want to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the 2017 street rehabilitation, Unit 3, contract to Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $1,309,007.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Dare?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, or please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Amber. Okay, 9.6, consideration and possible rejection of all bids for flow monitoring services for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Mr. Martini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, members of the council. John Martini, your Community Services Director, pinch hitting for Michael Drinkwater, our Treatment Plant Manager. As the council will recall, we do have flow monitoring in the pipes influenced to our treatment plant for purposes of metering and understanding how much flow is coming in the plant, as well as the distribution of Reno's flow versus Sparks' flow, so that we can do operational expense accounting. We have not bid this work in about four years. It was time to rebid it, so we put it back on the street. We did receive two bids upon bid opening. We had an apparent low bidder, however, discussion started thereafter, and there appears to have been an ambiguity in our technical specifications that did lead each of the bidders to a separate conclusion. Community services staff, as well as staff from the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, met with legal counsel. The opinion from our city attorney's office is the language in the technical specifications can be considered ambiguous and can be considered in either direction, and we were counseled to reject these bids, clean up the specification, and put it back on the street to render what we'd consider more complete or a fair bid. I apologize to the council. We work hard as a staff to keep our specifications clean, so that we're not here before you asking for this kind of an opinion. Staff does recommend that you reject the bids. The decision is yours, and I'm here to answer any of the questions you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments? Ms. Bybee?
John, how much of a delay will this mean in actually getting the new bids and the work started?
Councilman Bybee, so, we have a current provider for the metering services. We are now in a month-by-month fixed-fee basis. They are one of the bidders as well. Staff has already worked on the specifications. We're prepared to put it out. I would say this is going to cost us probably 60 days or so by the time we get through a bid. But those flow metering services will continue on a month-by-month basis until we have a new bidder in place to do it.
And then you need to come back to us once you do have a successful bidder for our approval?
You will see this again, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
I move to reject all bids for the Tom Wharf flow monitoring services.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, John. 9.7, presentation, discussion, and possible direction to participate in development of the Integrated Source Water Protection Program. Karen? And you have helpers, I see, or bodyguards?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. I just want to introduce you, the two members from the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection here today to make a presentation on the Integrated Source Water Protection Program. It's Kim Borgzinger and Birgit Henson. I hope I didn't swallow your names. Let me turn it over to them.
Welcome. Have a seat, and please introduce yourselves again, so we know which one's which.
My name is Kim Borgzinger, and I'm with the Division of Environmental Protection, Bureau of Safe Drinking Water.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Birgit Henson with the Division of Environmental Protection, State of Nevada. Thank you for having us. So, you don't need to say my name anymore, so we'll just dive in here.
So, the, we've given this presentation for quite a few boards now, so this is the fifth board that we've come to present to. So, some of you have seen us already. So, we apologize for the redundancy, but we're looking for support from all the various agencies as we come into Washoe County. The Integrated Source Water Protection Program is a voluntary program. It's funded through the state revolving fund, and it, we, it's basically a plan that helps us work to protect all the regulated public drinking water supplies in the county. And so, in Washoe County, there's a combination of groundwater and surface water with the Truckee River and about 200 wells in the valley that serves, obviously, the population of 400,000, and there's 78 active public water systems that the division regulates in Washoe County. And so, this is a stakeholder-driven process. We like to emphasize that this isn't a plan that the division is putting together. It's a plan that we're bringing stakeholders from all the different entities and various organizations that work in the business of water and protecting our water resources, so that we can develop a plan and implement a plan that works for this community and meets the individual characteristics of this community. And so, what we look for from boards such as yourself is an emphasis in supporting participation in the planning effort, which means that we'd like staff designated, the appropriate staff designated from the various organizations, to participate on the planning team and provide input to us so that we can make sure that the plan is a stakeholder-driven plan and not otherwise. And then we'll come back to the board and ask for your approval of the plan and present the plan and the recommendations that are made in the plan. And so, why are we doing this process now? It's a stakeholder-driven process. We've been focused on Washoe, I've been focused on Washoe County for the last couple of years because there's been other plans, planning efforts in place that are really providing some good momentum for this, this type of a planning effort here. We had the One Truckee River Plan, I think, that was presented to you about a year ago that we completed, and this plan is actually listed as an action item in that plan. So, we're actually implementing that plan by initiating this planning effort now. There's other plans, like the Truckee River Watershed Management Plan for the Stormwater Committee that's currently being updated. The Western Regional Water Planning Commission is updating their master plan, and so it all fits really nicely into this planning effort as well. So, we'd like to piggyback on those planning efforts. And this is a great opportunity to kind of briefly just tell you that this is a, a couple of programs at the state that we have been really working with our regional reps to integrate programs that have overlapping components, to provide more dedicated resources into the community, and have a more comprehensive approach to water quality protection. So, this is a way for us to leverage two programs at the state and bring resources from both of those programs into one larger planning effort. And with that, I'm going to let Birgit talk a little bit about that and her port, that, her programs side of the planning.
Good afternoon. Again, for the record, I am Birgit Henson, environmental scientist and the Nonpoint Source Program Manager for the Division of Environmental Protection for the State of Nevada. Just a little bit of framework. Nonpoint source refers to any kind of water pollution in the watershed, anything running off of the land that's not coming out of a pipe or not permitted through your stormwater permit that you have for the city of Reno and Washoe County. My program receives pass-through funds from the Environmental Protection Agency that we then utilize to help local communities implement water quality improvement projects as well as planning in order to prepare the actual effort to do that implementation. Kim and I have been brainstorming as to how to have source water, nonpoint source, work together in Washoe County and in the Truckee River watershed in order that the water issues can be looked at at the same time under the auspices of both programs. The major benefit of having a watershed management plan that results with having certain elements in it that the Environmental Protection Agency wants to see, which is nonregulatory, let me stress that, and is also stakeholder-driven by the local entities, is that it opens up a pot of money through the state that we can then implement those water quality improvement projects. And currently, right now, the only watersheds in the state that have these plans are the Carson, Tahoe, and Las Vegas wash. The rest of Nevada ends up with a much smaller pool of funding to do implementation projects as a result. And with that, I'd like to conclude my presentation. Ask for any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council? I have a couple. You talked about the nonpoint sources. Does that include the tributaries that are flooding and everything at this time of the year with our floods?
It does.
How do you deal with that when it's all on private property?
We coordinate with private property owners. It might be in education and outreach. It might be through the local neighborhood, I'm sorry, the NABS, I forget, advisory boards or the CABS, through any homeowners associations as well.
And how, what can you, what can you tell them that they want to hear? I mean, they're flooding, happens whenever we had floods like this, but normally they don't flood. So, do you offer them anything, or how's that work?
Just to be clear, the nonpoint source program addresses the actual water pollution that may result from the floods, but we are not directly addressing flooding. However, oftentimes flooding will be minimized by the different implementation projects that are, can be funded.
Help with that?
Yes. But they would have to address water quality issues.
And are you asking for a member of this council to serve on your committee?
Or designate staff from, from the city to do that.
Mr. Dare?
We've got to see you guys share a bit, and it's, I got to see across the board. It seems like the, everyone's been pretty excited about the idea. A lot of the staff and the other, from the health to the Tom Wharf, were very interested in, in getting involved. And so, it would seem, I appreciate that it's, whenever sometimes the state's involved, sometimes it doesn't come down in this fashion, but they're just coming with best practices. So, nothing's enforced. We're not asking us to enforce anything, but just allow us to work with them with best practices. So, I think it's a very good thing, and I'd like to make a motion if, if we're ready for that.
Okay, then we have one more, one discussion I'll call on you. Bybee?
So, I'm really kind of unclear what that commits Sparks to do besides working with this collaboration, which seems, seems like a broad, broad, you know, with a broad reach and good expertise and good focus that everyone has on the river and on water quality, but curious on what that looks like. I mean, you said it's nonregulatory, but what kind of impacts could, and would that be something we would have to approve? I mean, I'm just concerned on will that wind up in the end putting restrictions on individuals or businesses and industry here in the city of Sparks, because whatever you, whatever the results of, and not saying that I don't care about clean water, I do, but I'm kind of trying to drive it. What, what is the ultimate, the ultimate goal is to protect our water and to have the cleanest water we can, but is there a downside to that, or is there a cost involved to businesses or to individuals in this community?
Both the source water and the nonpoint source are nonregulatory programs. There are no regulatory teeth. The resultant plan, then, is voluntary to be implemented, and most importantly, it's completely stakeholder-driven. In other words, the city of Sparks, the representative city of Reno, Tom Wharf, Washoe County, it is what they're going to want to see in that resultant plan. And as Kim mentioned before, it would be brought before you again for consideration, should something be recommended that was a concern. At that point, we are hoping that that wouldn't happen because it would all be worked out through the stakeholder-driven process.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Dare?
So, I move to support and participate in the Integrated Source Water Protection Program and issue a letter to Nevada Department of Environmental Protection for staff participation with the in-depth and community representatives toward completion of the Truckee River Watershed Management Plan.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Birgit, and Kim, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
9.8, consideration and possible direction to the city manager to petition the appropriate court for injunctive, injunctive, injunctive and declaratory relief and/or to abate the nuisance on the property at 2900 South Deander Parkway, Deandrea Golf Course Clubhouse for possible action. I do have some public comment on this. Let's let them speak first, and then you can do your presentation. How's that? Mr. Thornley, do you want us to read those comments first, or does it matter? Okay, you can come down and give us a second, right? Ms. Bybee? Come on down, just. Yeah. Bybee?
Yeah, I'm Ray Rocha.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Whoa!
You can hear me. Hi, name.
Got a couple comments.
I need to make a statement first in regards to this agenda item. Nevada Ethics and Government Law requires that I disclose for the record that Randy Thompson, who served as my campaign manager for my election to the Spark City Council, is a partner in Deandria Rising LLC, a neighborhood advocacy group that is working to purchase the Deandria development after being hired by the property's current owner to assist in evaluating redevelopment options for the neighborhood. Because my voting on this matter could impact the success or failure of that business venture and might be construed as being unduly influenced by my political relationship with Ms. Thompson, or an unwarranted benefit conferred on her business as a result of our prior relationship, I reluctantly, I might say, have been advised by legal counsel, even though I would rather choose not to, but I've been advised, and I will be abstaining from voting on this issue. Thank you.
Okay, I have one comment also. Nevada's Ethics and Government Law requires that I disclose for the record that I own a home and live in the Deandria development. However, under the law of this state, I may vote on the matter because any benefit or detriment that may accrue to me personally as a result of this agenda item is not greater than that which may accrue to all of the homeowners and residents of the Deandria community. Mr. Rocha?
All right, we're ready. Ray Rocha and I'm representing the Deandria Board. I highly encourage the council to direct the city manager to take all action through the courts, appropriate courts, to get something moving on this project, to clean up the clubhouse area of Deandria, which is what you're talking about. It's been over a year and a half since the fire occurred. Action is needed. I know there's potential liability issues to consider, that there are other considerations, that you had to go through the current owners of the property to see if they were going to do something on it. From my understanding, they haven't done anything. So, now it's back in our ballpark, or the city's ballpark, to do something. And I highly encourage that you direct the manager ASAP, whatever issues, let's get moving on it, let's get her done.
Thank you. Joe Cannoli?
I prefer to speak at the end, because I'm going to talk about a little bit more events and what you've talked about.
I've got, public comment is open now. I can, I can close it and bring you back up, if that's what you want to do. Okay. Anybody else in public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to the council. Mr. Rundle? Mr. Rundle. Angela, did you want to come up? Did you want to come up too, please? Allison, Allison. Sorry. Sorry, Allison. I know your name. Mr. Rundle.
Jim Rundle, your planning manager, here to speak on the item 9.8 that you introduced earlier, Mayor Protem, Ron Smith. This item is in regard to the Deandrea Golf Clubhouse, Golf Course Clubhouse at 2900 South Deandrea Parkway. The Deandrea Clubhouse burned on October 28, 2015. The clubhouse was partially demolished as part of the fire suppression program that was directed by the city's fire marshal. Because the fire was caused by arson, the site was considered a crime scene until very recently, October of 2016. The arsonist ultimately pled guilty in November and was sentenced in February of 2017, last month. Numerous requests for enforcement of the applicable Sparks Municipal Code came from the residents of Deandrea, as well as elected officials and residents from other areas. Due to the crime scene investigation, unfortunately, the city was able to proceed with enforcement at the site. After the site was no longer deemed a crime scene, staff initiated contact with the listed property owner, identifying that the site was a nuisance and required compliance. Code enforcement staff cited Title VII, which is the nuisance ordinance, and in this case, the city may choose to abate such a nuisance. Sparks Municipal Code 7.16.050 requires the city, first of all, to notify the violator of the nuisance and provide them an opportunity to rectify the problem. On February 7, 2017, the city identified to the property owner through a letter and through certified mail that they had up until March 13 to fix the problem. As of March 14, which was the day the staff report was due, the city had not heard anything, and we still haven't, and we still have not heard anything from the property owner. Due to the lack of response from the property owner and the ongoing nuisance at the site, the city council may direct the city manager to petition the appropriate court for injunctive release to abate the nuisance or both. The abatement process is outlined in Title VII, and the city staff has followed that process as outlined. The city council has these processes afforded to them, not only in the Sparks Municipal Code, but also in the Nevada revised statutes. Today, in staff's opinion, the primary consideration for the city council in respect to this item is whether or not to direct the city manager to seek the appropriate court for an injunctive and declaratory relief to abate the nuisance. If the council chooses to direct the city manager to do so, the secondary action would be on to what extent the nuisance should be abated. Your staff has outlined three possible, or let me change that, your staff has identified three scenarios, and we've outlined them as A, B, and C. Scenario A would cost approximately $63,500, and that would include removing the debris and the rubble remaining from the burned structure. However, this scenario does not include securing the remainder of the building, as this structure that formerly served as the Deandrea Clubhouse had a basement which housed the golf courts, golf carts. And that, in staff's opinion, may need to be secured. Scenario B includes all of the cleanup of the debris as outlined in Scenario A, and would also include securing the basement structure. This is an additional $27,000, approximately, for a total of $90,500. Scenario C proposes the complete demolition of the structure to restore the site to a graded pad ready for new development. This scenario would cost approximately $253,000. This cost estimate is far higher than Scenario B because it includes the demolition of the former basement or golf cart storage structure, which is a very thick structure with concrete and rebar and such. Abatement of this site would mean that the city of Sparks would initiate and complete the work to the extent that the city council outlines. And again, as I stated earlier, today has essentially, potentially, potentially two motions, and first of all, the primary consideration is to whether to direct the city manager to move forward with this, as we've outlined, and then the secondary portion would be to the extent the city council has deemed to be an appropriate abatement. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions or comments? Mr. Lawson.
All right, let's talk about the legal part of this. So if we take, clean the side up, weld some steel doors on the basement, and one of the kids on his skateboard decides it's a grand idea to jump from the top to the bottom and breaks his neck, who's liable for that?
Allison McCormick, Assistant City Attorney. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the council. To answer your question, Mr. Lawson, probably the city. Having undertaken partial abatement of this nuisance, if we leave that structure intact in a dangerous condition, the city could potentially be liable for damages.
Does this liability go on forever until there's something built there? Or is there some timeframe where we say, you know, we'll be liable, can we do that for a certain amount of time? Probably not.
The city certainly can't unilaterally decide we're not going to be liable anymore after this time. I wish we could.
So if we did B, clean it up and fill it with dirt, what kind of liability would be left then?
I think the example that Councilman Lawson suggested, that someone could climb up on top of that back-filled basement structure and jump off, hurting themselves, could be a problem. In addition to that, there would probably be ongoing code enforcement complaints. The site in the past has been a major graffiti problem. Trespassers have gone through the chain link fence that was used in an attempt to secure the remaining portions of the structure. So it's expected that if we don't do complete abatement, if the city council decides to abate this problem, that we'll have ongoing problems.
It's private property, and the only way we can do this is go through the courts. Could we buy liability insurance for that? It's not our parcel, but could we buy liability insurance on that to protect us? It's not gonna fix a broken neck, but it could save us a lot of money in court if something happened.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Is it true that also it has to do with, when you have a piece of property and if you fenced it off and made it to where you cannot see in so much, that it changes a little bit because you're not inviting? It's the invitation, if you do something where it looks like you're inviting a student, something they want to be on, isn't, doesn't that give us some more liability? And it lessens the liability if we take away the ability to see that? Like if we were to put a better fence around that and really seal it off, or something of that fashion, and made it to where it was not such an eyesore for everybody, but also was not an invitation to come and find the next skateboard ramp, like Mr. Lawson said? Does that matter? Am I crazy? I'm not a lawyer, but I remember hearing this in my time.
A more substantial fence structure, or some kind of a wall, or something like that?
Something that you're not walking by and say, ooh, it's jumping there. I mean, if we really, so they had to actually break in to something they couldn't see, I think that changes our liability, does it not, or am I wrong?
It would probably detract from the structure being an attractive nuisance. It would certainly be an argument that we could make in court when we got sued, but I don't know that it would guarantee us protection.
Want to do something, but I, my responsibility is for the entire city of Sparks and not just Deandrea. And I can't see any court in the world, as soon as you roll up a kid in a wheelchair for the rest of his life, and them not finding the city of Sparks guilty of an attractive nuisance. And I don't know that I can support, to me, it's either all or nothing. I'm willing to put this off, and let's give it another month or two to see if something else can happen, but I think the liability is too great for the city in the long term to take on any type of project there unless it's completely taking that to the ground.
Do you have any comments? Actually, I got one. Mr. Abbott?
So on the, either way, we're spending money. So in our budget, is this, where does that come out of?
Mayor Protem, the manager, can answer that.
Mr. Bisco.
Mr. Mayor Protem, Steve, let's go over the record. What we have currently, I did identify some money when we were doing year-end projection with some salary savings that you allow me to manage, and so $100,000 was put aside based on scenarios A and B. If it was the council's pleasure to do Scenario C, then we would have to bid that out. It's above my spending authority. It would be under the basis of what the court says we can do. And then, when it came back with an agreement with whoever was going to perform the service, there would be a funding question in there. The funding source that I would most likely have to take a look at would be whether or not I have some additional savings, salary savings, or whether I might need to tap into the contingency fund, because that would be the only other source of already, you know, unspoken for. So we would have to come back with you with that. But if it is, it is your policy to satisfy what you want, and then we will help you find the money to do that.
It says, "City council will then decide whether the cost of abatement should be made a personal obligation." We don't want to do that because that would be to will, right? Well, Gus, listen.
It would actually be to the property owner, which is an LLC. The managing member of that LLC is another LLC.
That's a no-go. Or a special assessment against the property that would be collected in the same manner as general property taxes per SMC. So what's the difference between a lien and an assessment against the property?
The special assessment can go on the tax roll and eventually, if it's not paid during the reclamation period, which is two years, it would then be sold at a tax sale. The minimum auction bid at that tax sale would be all of our costs of abatement and any fees and interest and that sort of thing. The assessor's value of the property, which obviously is not market value, but it is about $150,000 for that parcel, so it's not clear that the city would be able to recover its $250,000 or so cash outlay.
That's if we demolished everything, or?
Correct.
So lien would come due when somebody bought the property. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just from a procedural standpoint, we're asking for an injunction. Once we file for an injunction, we will certainly ask the court to require the property owner to abate the nuisance. Between the time that the injunction is filed and the court finally gets around to ruling on that, it's going to be quite a while, probably, you know, it could happen quickly under law. These things take priority. Nevertheless, once the court issues its order, probably give the property owner some time in which to abate the nuisance. That could be 30 days, it could be 60 days, it could be 90 days, I don't know. But we would certainly ask the court to require the property owner to fix it. We would probably ask that, because these were equitable proceedings, the property owner is free to come in and say, it's an undue hardship on the property owner to require them to, for instance, perform Option C. Nevertheless, the property owner will make an assertion to the court that it'll get done. That's going to give us some time in the overall scheme of things here to strategize as the litigation is going on. And Allison, if I'm in any way going out of my boundaries, please correct me and let the council know. But I think that we've got some time, and I would recommend that we go for Option C now through the injunctive process. Again, we may be back here in six months saying, well, the court finally issued an order. The property owner has been held in contempt because they failed to go forward with their promises to the court, and now we are free to really look at this anew and make a determination as to what type of remedial services we want to conduct on this particular parcel.
So the time that we've spent sending letters and everything wouldn't count into that at all?
Those letters, those letters, I think, indicate that the city has, in a good-faith attempt, been trying to do this. And what we want to show to the court is that this is really our last and best effort here. We've been trying to work with the property owner. We've gotten no relief from the property owner. The residents are being harmed. It's attracting trespassers, criminal activity by way of arson. We have no reason to believe that this type of activity will not continue. So we've told the court, Judge, we've done everything we can. Now we need the court's help. We need judicial intervention to help the city of Sparks in this compelling issue that's before the court now. So those letters have helped. As far as initiating any type of timeframe, not really. They haven't really acted to start anything. Our citation efforts, I mean, what else can we do? We've written letters, we've cited them, nothing. It's not until that this agenda item came on here today that we are even starting to get any type of feedback from the property owners. I would say that regardless of the feedback that we're getting, allow the city manager to go forward in this petition. Everything that we hear today about, well, we're getting close to a deal, or we're doing this, we're doing that, that can all be worked out during litigation. It's funny, once you get a complaint like this filed, a petition filed, it really helps to bring the parties to the table. And now, we're in the caper seat. We've got the legal action filed. You want to fix this up, come talk to us now, and then we can all, we've got the leverage now to hold this over their heads and go forward with hopefully what will be a satisfactory resolution with this.
I think we have a lot of residents of our city that have put up, watching all this, watching all this happen, and I think it's important we do something, is my thought. And I share that because, you know, we're creating a city here that we're growing, we have new things going on, and we have a building like that that's sitting there for that length of time. There's a part of me, and I definitely understand Councilman Lawson's idea of risk, but I also would say that I don't know, any business that I'm a part of doesn't have risk involved of some sort. And I, my only hope, my only question, though, is I appreciate the $90,000. I think the larger one seems almost like we're spending now money that, going beyond, there's too many cuts we've had to do for our city to go that far. So if we did do it, it would seem the 90, but with that said, is there any way to make sure that we could try to do, like we talked about, create something that's not such an invitation as part of this? I think it's crucial that, well, for our city. And I know this is an area, so people are watching who don't live up in that area might say it has nothing to do with us. But I'm going to say that's not true because you live in the city of Sparks, and what affects one's portion in your city affects everybody. So if you live in the city of Sparks, something burnt down, sitting there for months and months and months, says something very real about our city. And so, to me, I think it's important that we look at that.
Mr. Lawson.
You know, I would be willing to go ahead with... You know, I would be willing to go ahead with seeking the injunctive and declaratory relief, but not committing to any type of action until after that's done. At least let's move it through the court system, get it happening. But we're not going to commit to touching one piece of trash over there at the City of Sparks because it makes us liable until after we have the injunction. And if we could just do that part of it, I would be happier. I know it doesn't help the DeAndrea residents, but it does help the future developer to gain some more time. There's a lot of moving pieces on this. And, you know, it's not my intention, if you know me at all, you know that I am all for growth and for making things happen in the City of Sparks. But this is a particular person that we've dealt with in the past who has not been straightforward, has not lived up to any commitment he's ever made to us. And there's no reason to believe, in my mind, that he'll live up to any commitment in the future. So I want to have the hammer, as Chad Adams says, to, in the end, we say we can make it happen. So if it's going to be, what do you think, Chad, on timing to get an injunction would be 60, 90, 100 ways?
If we file the petition next week, by the time we got everybody served, we probably wouldn't get an initial hearing on this until 30 days out. So we get a hearing 30 days out. And I can tell you from my experience with these types of proceedings, when I was in the district attorney's office, we got a home just up the hill from that, across from the hospital. Guy was building the house, ran out of money, and there was a partially built structure up there. Of course, it became a very popular place for parties and future family members in our community. And the court was very specific that, listen, get away, do away with it all. Fix it and fix it right. We want this thing completely demolished. We want this brought back to an area that's as safe as you could possibly make it. So the chances that we're going to get that type of an order, I think anyway, based upon my experience, are very good. But, all that being said, when we got that court order, the property owner, I don't know how they got it, but they received a huge infusion of cash. And that home was completed, you know, about four months later. So what I'm saying is that, once we get that court order, and that judgment in and of itself is probably something that we could record as an initial lien. Actually, we could probably go in with some type of pre-order lien as well and notify all third-party beneficiaries or all prospective buyers that this land is under litigation and that the title is about to be clouded. So we have a lot of legal remedies open and available to us that I think will help to convince the property owner that we are serious, and if they don't want to do it, we will do it. We're going to go forward with it. We're going to make it safe for our community. We're going to get rid of the ice war that our residents have had to suffer with for so many years. And it's got to be frustrating for everybody else. My wife and I were married up there. It looks horrible to go back up there and take a look at what's been done to this because of, you know, trespassers and arsonists. So my advice, let us go forward with this. Let us get something filed. And, believe me, Councilman Dare, your concerns are well-founded, but I don't know if they're necessarily going to come to fruition.
Allison, is the responsibility right now if somebody gets hurt up there, is that on the homeowner or the property owner?
That's somewhat arguable. Having agendized this item, the city obviously is aware of the danger, so there's...
That's where I'm going with this, because we are aware of the dangers up there. Do we have a liability right now?
Arguably, yes. My opinion would be no, however, whether to abate this nuisance and to what extent is a discretionary act of the city council. So we likely have discretionary act immunity as that basis. The decision to spend public money to correct a problem on private property is a difficult one that the council is faced with. And I think either way that the council goes is supportable under state law.
Is the property secured?
There's a fence, there is a chain-link fence around it.
All the way around it?
Mm-hmm. The golf course? And that picture in your packet, I attempted to demonstrate that, but obviously you can't go 360 degrees. But yeah, we did walk around, I've been around the site three times. One of the times, there was a hole in the chain-link fence. That's how people are easily getting in. The other time, it was fixed.
If we went with and started talking about the idea of doing the primary injunction and waited for the, to make a decision on abatement, how quickly, let's say this injunction goes through, and so we say, "Okay, let's go through and get that," which you said, and then all of a sudden, so the court says, "Okay, we agree." But is there any teeth to it if we're not coming with any finances? So, or, and if that's the case, how quickly can we add finances to say, "Okay, now that nothing's moved," or the buyers aren't, you know, because maybe by then, maybe the buyers are already in and moving and all doing their stuff. But either way, can we make a decision and a quick decision then to get that moved?
We'd have another item after the court permitted us to bring this forward to the council.
We'd have to get a court order telling the property owner to clean it up.
And then, the property owner would have to actually fail to comply with that court order. That will probably be 30 or 60 or 90 days. I'm just guessing. Once the property owner fails to comply with the court order, we then go in with what we call an order to show cause why the property owner should not be held in contempt. Then, if the court holds the property owner in contempt, we would ask the court to allow us, and now, to go in and fix the problem. So that's going to take a while. Right now, and to follow up, and I certainly agree with Allison as far as potential liability, but right now, all we have is a potential for litigation. We don't have any possessory interest. We don't even have a right to enter upon the property, per se. I think that our liability is, as Allison said, very minimal right now should somebody go back onto the property and injure themselves. So, once again, which is another criminal act, it's a trespass. Nevertheless, as Allison pointed out, an attractive nuisance. Were we reasonable in trying to keep people out of this thing, keep people away? And that's always going to be a question to litigate. But I think we're a long ways away before we're ever looking at any type of real liability for that.
Mr. Lawson.
I'm going to try a motion and see if we can move this forward.
Well, wait a minute, we got some public comment, and then we can go to there.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for now? Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment. Mr. Canali.
Welcome, Joe Canali, DeAndrea Board of Directors member and homeowner, Mr. Mayor Protem and council. We spent a lot of time discussing what we have done with, will, what we have not done with that community. The golf course closed in 2012. And right after the golf course closed, I started calling the city. And I will swear, but I don't have it down, that I spoke with either the city planner or the city enforcement. And I complained about the weeds. I complained about the fire hazard that was coming up. And at that time, I was told that the owner would receive a letter from the city. They could receive up to two letters from the city. And if they did not respond to the third letter, that it would be a felony misdemeanor. No sooner than after I was told that the third one was served, the owner went and pulled all the weeds, at least on South DeAndrea Parkway. The following year, when it came up, I asked the same person, "Can anything be done to have these weeds?" They said, "No, we need to send another letter." And I said, you know, "If it was a DUI and you had two of them within seven years, and then you had another one before seven years, you've already been warned, you go to jail." I asked why he couldn't be put in jail for that. And I was told that there was nothing the city could do. A lot of mention from the handbook for the DeAndrea, which is in here, has come up of different things that can and cannot be allowed on that property. Open space, weed abatement, all types of different things. The handbook that was recorded in October 2013, on page 16, it says, "The entire property is within the sphere of influence for the City of Sparks." With that, what my question is, he's been served on, he's been served to weed abatement, he's been served to remove this nuisance. We know that he owes thousands, and it's more than that, of dollars to the city for his water usage. We know that he owes other people quite a few bills. We also know that the only time that taxes were paid on the property were by the owner of the note, who then put it back in his place. My question is, as we've watched, forgive me, the Reno City Council take some blighted property over and either demolish them or sell them to somebody. We know that we have at least one entity that's trying to purchase this property. Why can't the city eminent domain and take this property over for all the things that this person, who has proven that he is not a good neighbor, who's proven he's not a tax attorney, I mean, he's not a taxpayer, why can't the city do something like that that would take care of all the things that you're talking about and actually made it?
Thank you, Jim.
Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Steve Trollope, go ahead.
Steve Trollope, for the record, Mayor Protem, council members, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. Sitting here, listening to all the concerns and comments that come forward, we're very, very understanding of what's going on out at DeAndrea. We've been living and breathing the purchase of this property now for a year and a half since we originally got involved. We've been under contract since last August to purchase the property. And we're, I believe we're getting close, although there's still a lot of work to do. We're getting very close to what may be seeing the end in sight, where we may be able to close on the sale of the property. What I'm hearing from Mr. Adams is that it's going to take a considerable amount of time for you to initiate and get this process going with the injunctive relief. And that we are, if you elect to continue, or if you elect to pursue that direction, is that we will continue to, in our efforts, to consummate the sale of the property with the owner. Hopefully, we can get that done before you have to take any specific actions with the court. And you can trust us that we're going to do everything in our power possible to close that property and come in as the new owners and do the right thing for the community. Any questions I could answer?
Mr. Adams.
I certainly applaud your efforts here, and I'm sure many of the residents do, too. A potential problem that, of course, get your own lawyers on this. Hopefully, you've got your own lawyers working for you now. Put them in contact with our office, because I don't want you guys to be the next-named party on here. In other words, we're naming the current owners, and then you buy it by operation of law, you've bought yourself a lawsuit as well. So let's work that out once the property closes or it goes into escrow. Have your lawyers call, my lawyers, and everybody will charge you a couple of hours of billables.
Okay.
All right?
Well, I think...
And we want to work with you.
I'd be happy to share a copy of our purchase contract with you.
That's none of my business. I just want you guys to be aware that, I think we're all going to try and do the same things. But, you know, the representations that you're making to my council today, as I understand them, is that if you purchase the property, you're going to fix the problem.
No, it runs deeper than that. Actually, as part of our purchase contract with the current owner, the fired debris has to be cleared, and all the liens and encumbrances on the property have to be cleared before we close the sale.
We may have an encumbrance on the property for you, too, if they don't clear that, clean that up. But hopefully, we can get something going in concert here and just see what we can do.
Okay, I'll be happy to get our council in contact with you.
Happy to talk to him or her or them.
You know, Stephen, this has been a point of contention for a year and a half now, since it burned down, I believe. Have you made any contract with it for a year and a half?
Last August?
Six months. Seven months.
History says that it's going to take you another couple... You can't really vote on or take that into consideration, that you're going to buy the property, because maybe you're not going to buy the property. So we can't, we appreciate what you're saying here, and believe me, anybody up here, that's my word. And we need to, it's all falling off. I want to take care of this property and do whatever we can. So you can...
Please support that, and we'll do everything possible from our side to assist.
Appreciate that. Any other, well, we're still in public comment.
Just one last comment I would appreciate and indulge you on, and that is, is that with the consideration of the option C, which is what we would consider the nuclear option, that's going to remove effectively all of the existing infrastructure, including utilities, endpoints, et cetera, et cetera. We haven't gotten a direct estimate on the cost to replace that infrastructure, but we know it's going to be considerable. And it's going to be, well, we saw those bids earlier and what the street repairs is going to cost in the various areas. Can you imagine replacing all that infrastructure out there? So I would, we'll work, we want to work with you and do the right thing for the community. So thank you very much.
Mr. Lawson.
Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Lawson.
So I'm going to just recommend we do the primary motion, which is to direct the city manager to petition the appropriate court for injunctive and declaratory relief to abate the nuisance at the DeAndrea Golf Course Clubhouse located at 2900 South DeAndrea Parkway. And before anything else comes, occurs with that, the next steps will be brought back to the council at that time to be discussed on how we want to proceed.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Dare.
Given the whole conversation, I can second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You know, before we vote, I just want to say that this has been going on for a long This is a tough one for me. I'd rather just fill it in and try to secure it, but I'll go along with the motion and the second, if that's what it takes. Any other questions or comments? Saying none, please vote. Okay, we have, it passes four and one abstention. So, thank you. I lost my thing here. Let me get back to it. So, okay, I'll talk afterwards.
You got it?
Yeah, I got it. Okay. 9.9, self-corrective action by the Sparks City Council under the open meeting law, rescission of prior approval of a draft resolution. Mr. Thornley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Doug Thornley, Assistant City Attorney, repusing my role today as the bearer of bad news. On or about the 27th of February this year... my role today as the bearer of bad news. On or about the 27th of February this year, certain staff members became aware of the possibility of a measure at the legislature to amend the city's charter, to make the city attorney position, to change it from an elected position to an appointed position. Historically, the council has opposed that sort of measure, and individual conversations that are permitted under the open meeting law led to the conclusion that perhaps a resolution should be drafted and presented to the city council. Based on those discussions, the city attorney drafted the resolution and circulated it for comments, as would also be permitted under the open meeting law. However, he circulated it to the entirety of the council in a single email, rather than as individual emails to individual members. That amounts to effectively a quorum coming together in what could be described as a meeting. On the 1st of March, three members of the council hit reply all to that email and indicated support for the measure. And that is arguably the council taking action outside a properly agendized meeting and is a violation of the open meeting law. And so the remedy in cases like this is for the city council to take self-corrective action, which amounts to essentially the council acknowledging the wrongdoing and rescinding the action formally. What it does not do is it does not preclude the city council from considering or taking action, even the same action, so long as that that matter is properly agendized on a future agenda. Happy to answer any questions the council might have. Otherwise, that concludes what I have to say.
I certainly appreciate Mr. Thornley's position. It's tough to be in front of a public body like this on television and tell the public body that his boss screwed up. But that's exactly what I did do. I created an electronic forum when I sent that email out to everybody. And I got the sense that because our constituents' constitutional right to vote was at issue and was being threatened, that the city council was anxious to address this and protect your constituents and their right to vote for their elected representatives in Sparks' government. Nevertheless, I was probably a little more excited than everybody else. We've worked very hard on our charter committee to give our citizens a greater opportunity and a greater voice in their vote with our charter amendments. And the possibility of a unilateral amendment of our city charter without the input of either our citizens or our charter committee, I think, was very offensive to all of us. So that was my fault to create an electronic forum. It's my responsibility as your legal counsel to not do that and to think outside the box when it comes to your traditional forms as compared to electronic forms. Nevertheless, I facilitated it. I don't expect people on here to know the finer nuances of the law. I should have advised you of that, and for that I apologize. Nevertheless, as Mr. Thornley has pointed out, and I've talked to the Attorney General's office, and the Attorney General certainly saw no inappropriate acts on our city council. It was all inadvertent, and that it's a simple fix of coming before the public today, saying that our city attorney screwed up, we're going to have to revoke our, rescind our prior approval of that possible resolution. And as Mr. Thornley said, it's up to the city council whether or not you want to take, because once you rescind it, you're free to do anything else that you want, as far as protecting your citizens' right to vote. So that's what this agenda item's all about. And I appreciate Mr. Thornley being kind to the old man up here, but it was my fault.
You know, and I've been on the council now for 11 years, and as soon as I pushed that button, I realized that I made a mistake. And we self-reported it. There's only three members of the council that actually answered that email, two of them did not. So I take responsibility for that also, Mr. Adams, because I knew as soon as I did it, that I did it wrong. I shouldn't have done it. And so I apologize for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll make a motion. I move the approval of the February 28, 2017 draft of the proposed mayor's resolution presented be rescinded. Mr. Dare?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, Mr. Thornley. Passes unanimously. Okay. Thanks, Jett. Okay, we'll move to public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? I do have one card. Come on down. William Gilbert, AKA Benjamin Warren Kreveling IV? Okay. Come on down. You have three minutes, sir. Sure. Yeah, give your name for the record.
Hello, my name is William Orion Kelly Gilbert, AKA Benjamin Warren Kreveling IV. I have a ranch of about 342 acres with the Powers Trust Fund in Big Bend, California, which is our frontier, Bernie is our frontier of our watershed plan unit, and it's the top of our plan unit, Sparks being the bottom of our plan unit of the watershed. And I can go on for a long time telling you all about it, but for right now, I'm just going to start new and not look at anything in the back of any of you guys' past histories. Good to see you, sir. You remember me?
A little bit.
Okay. But I want to nominate a certain amount of funds with Reno and Sparks and Indian Colony, which we'll provide and it will strengthen and give us the security when we're all together working on this. So one, if I just nominate, like, so I almost just went forward with Reno, but then I would have been on the same page with you guys. And so, and they just presented me to have my name changed as Benjamin Warren Kreveling, which my grandfather, he passed away in 2013, January 1st. I was buying a home at 619 North Gate Drive in the Sun Valley, because working on the watershed plan, on the unit of Eagle Canyon, and I graduated from Spanish Springs in 2005. But anyways, long story short, I went back to the ranch, and six months after, or eight months after, eight months into, it was 2013, the 8th of, the 8th month of the 29th day, that's when $100,000 was presented to the ranch to pay for any of my grandfather's dues. And the property was only worth $400, or $47,000, and that was for his 40 acres. But that's the main thing. And long story short, it ties the Powers Trust with the PG&E, with PG&E ties with the Sierra Pacific. And it's, I'm stuck with this, with this, I call it a curse, but it's 47 stocks, it's called the Great West. And I got out of there, I moved back over here, and I started working again. In the meantime, I lost my property foreclosed on because I had 40 acres I was trying to keep together. And it was just a nightmare a little bit, but they still nominated me for, to take over the Great West, 47 stocks, which SSC, Spanish Springs Construction, they, within three months of me working there, that it was brought up to the table. And I got terminated because I do concrete, and when you don't do this upgrade, the base, compact it right, it really irritates me. And it's most important to compact that base before you pour concrete, and they're just pouring concrete. So I got terminated. But the Great West is still proceeding with them.
Wrap it up, please, sir. Your time's up.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, bring it back to the council. Comments from the city council and city manager? We got Charlene Bybee up first.
Yes, I'd like to put in a, I'd like to request the city manager and staff to consider adding another category to our City Sparks liquor licenses. It's come to my attention with a, with the Restless Artists Theater was looking for liquor licensing, and as I worked, checked into what liquor licenses we have, we don't have a category for beer and wine, or just for wine only, if you're not a restaurant or bar. And I think that not only, and the theater is going to look at a cabaret license, but I thought, as we look forward to developing downtown Sparks, and we're looking at possible other venues, art galleries, or coffee shops that want to only serve wine, or only serve beer and wine, I'd like to look into the possibility of adding two more categories to our liquor licensing, and whatever fees would be appropriate for that. Thank you.
Okay. Before I get to Mr. Driscoll, Adam Mayberry. Come up here and sit at the seat, would you please, Mr. Mayberry?
Oh, just by that much?
You almost got away.
Almost.
You know, Mr. Mayberry, not, if you don't know, Adam is leaving the City of Sparks after how many years, Adam? How many years?
Eleven and a half.
Eleven and a half years. He's taken a position in Colorado Springs at the airport, assistant airport manager, is that right? And I think that's his passion. You know, I'm going to personally miss you, because you're the best-looking guy in Sparks. And now Ed's going to be the best-looking guy in Sparks. Okay, and I don't know if we can...
Standards are dropping quickly.
I know. I don't know if we can live with that. But Adam, you've been, you've been just a spark plug for the city, and you're always there for us, answering our call and helping us out when we need it, giving us some direction on different things, keeping everybody informed. You've been wonderful for the city, and congratulations on your promotion. And next week, you'll be there?
In a couple of weeks. My last day will be Monday, yeah.
Okay, okay. So I think Mr. Driscoll wants to say a few things, and then we'll take you out and hose you down with a fire hose or something.
Turn it over, please.
That spectacular Sparks, that was amazing. Your ability to win lunch, that is terrible. But hey, I wish you and Tammy and the girls all the best in Colorado, and I am going to miss you, my friend.
Hi, Adam. Want to tell you that it has been a pleasure getting to know you. I like your voice of reason. I like your whimsical side. You've brought us a long way. We will miss you.
Hey, Adam, we're really going to miss you here. I've enjoyed working with you for the past 11 years. We've gone through a lot, everything from two website upgrades to floods, and also council chamber excitement. So I'm looking forward to hearing from you and seeing how good you do in Colorado Springs.
Hey, Adam, enjoyed working with you all these years, and wish you the best of luck in Colorado. So you'll be missed around here, but best wishes, Armonia.
Hi, Adam. I'm really sorry to see you go. I didn't really know what to say to your video, so I went online and Googled you to see if I could get some hints. And there's just five million hits, which explains the thing that I love the most about you, is that you've always kept us informed and kept the city informed. And I appreciate it. I even saw you out in the pouring rain, covering the flood event. So I really am going to miss you, and I wish you the best, and hope everything works out.
Okay. Hey, Adam, it's Tracy. Really sad to see you go, but proud of you for finding something else. And I really want to thank you for everything you've done for the Parks and Recreation Department. We had a really good run. Thanks, and good luck to you and your family.
Hey, Adam, it's Erin. Just wanted to wish you good luck in Colorado, and had a pleasure working with you. And I hope you do well down there and have a good time.
Adam, I can't tell you how much a pleasure it's been to get to work with you and to get to know you. From the time I was working neighborhoods and met you and your beautiful family, to our trip to Windover, where you introduced me to the Nevada League of Cities. I'm super excited that you have the opportunity to enter the field of aviation, something that you're passionate about. I want to wish you the very best of luck. Thank you, and remember, the sky's the limit.
Well, Adam, we're sorry to see you go. It's been a pleasure working with you. We're very excited about your new endeavor. We know you love aviation, and this is going to give you a chance to kind of work on your career goals that you have, and we really wish you the best. And we know that it's a little scary for the move, but you and the girls are going to have a great time. You're moving to a great community. So we wish you well, and please remember City of Sparks with fond memories.
Hey, Adam, it's great working with you. Even though it's a short amount, and you've been an awesome resource to the city, from just being the public eye, to coming up with great new ideas that have helped the city and helped all of us that are citizens of the city. You will be missed.
Hi, Adam. It's hard to believe more than a decade has passed since you first joined the City of Sparks team. And I'd like to truly thank you for all the support that you've provided the Parks and Recreation Department through the years, sharing our information on all that we do with the community. I want to wish you all the best with your new position in Colorado. It's a great time for a new adventure, and I wanted to just wish you safe travels, my friend.
Hey, Adam, you know probably I'm going to miss you more than anybody here. I know you're going on to bigger and better things, hopefully, for you and your family. And among all the good wishes that I do wish for you, I hope that you'll come out of this a good Democrat.
Adam, congratulations on your next move to Colorado, to a purple state. I see that you're beginning to sway toward the other side. I want to let you know that, you know, I've filled your shoes in the PIO role, and I don't plan on filling your role when you go to Colorado. But I wish you the best of luck, and I will miss you. I'll miss our walks and talking about aviation and politics, and I hope that this is great for you. I'll miss you.
Hey, Adam. Good luck on your move and your new job and adventure. It'll be fun. I had a real good time working with you on the comprehensive plan and all the other planning topics that we had to go through, especially like medical marijuana. But the comprehensive plan was the big one that we worked together on. It was a lot of fun, all those public meetings and getting out there and talking to people about the city.
Adam Mayberry, thank you so much for all you've done. You're a good friend, and I'm going to tell you, just watching you and your dedication that you have for our city, you'll be missed. I'm sure that Colorado Springs will treat you well and continue to focus on your family and your kiddos.
Adam Mayberry, I'm going to just miss you. I have to tell you. I have to tell you. The one, the one, oh, Peter, sing good news.
Adam, congratulations on your new position. We hope you'll do well there, but we'll certainly miss you. I know I will. You've really been helpful to me these past 10 years or so in managing the message of the city, especially from the city attorney's perspective. And you were an invaluable part of the team while you were here. Appreciate it, buddy.
Well, Adam, I understand you're leaving. I appreciate the fact that you wrote me a speech, and always the thrifty employee, dual purpose. So let me just read what you have here. "Adam has been the best employee we have ever had. He is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. We are not sure how we will go on without him." And I think you plagiarized the Boy Scout law. Okay, but in all seriousness, we're going to miss you, buddy. Chase your dreams. I'm looking forward to hearing good things from you in the future.
And that's all for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. We appreciate you watching. As for me, this is the final program that I'll be hosting. It's been a privilege and honor serving the citizens of Sparks, and I appreciate you tuning in. From all of us at the City of Sparks, thank you.
You know, and I didn't get a chance to make today. I tried, but I got caught up doing something. But, you know, something nobody mentioned was when we rebranded several years ago, you were a big part of that. And you kind of took over the BLT, which is the Brand Leadership Team. It's a group of people, a group of business peoples, people, that give the city direction and come up with ideas. And there are no elected officials on there, but you, and you've done the Citizens Advisory Committee, you've taken the lead on all those. So it's going to be a tough deal to replace you, Adam, and I mean that sincerely. We're going to miss you. Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you.
See that on... Yeah. Adam writes most of the speeches. Go ahead and say something.
Well, I was going to say, thank you very much, members of the council, Mr. Manager. I appreciate it very much. It's been a real, real privilege. And I'm usually on the, I usually produce those. I'm not on the receiving end, so that was, that was fun to watch. The first meeting that I was introduced at, at the time, they were growing, I think we had three meetings a month, and Mayor Martini wasn't at that meeting. So it's appropriate that he's not at my last meeting either, you know. So I know, hopefully, he's watching. So, I know he's, hopefully, he's watching, and I wish him well as well, but, you know, I think that when you're the primary communicator for an organization, you're really only as good as, as the people that, that are there for you to provide information, and most of these folks that you heard from and that are, that are sitting over here have been just phenomenal, and I appreciate their support and their help over the years as well, and thank you for all you do for our great city, and it's, it's truly been an honor and a, a pleasure to be here, and, you know, I think you, you, you define your, your tenure wherever you're at with things that, that occur in your life, you know? And I, I, I cry a lot, so I, I, 'cause I'm an emotional guy, and, and so, I don't wanna cry, but I, I had my, you know, I had my daughters when I was working here, and, you know, they've, they've seen me kinda grow through the city and have been connected, and so, that's been, that's been a real pleasure to, to be a part of, but, but God bless you. Thank you very much for the, for the, for the touching, for the touching video. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, are there any more comments from city council, or? Mr. Driscoll?
Well, because of that, I have business that I need to announce directly related to the previous conversation. One of the things Adam talked about was, you know, his, his love for aviation, and that's kinda what he got started in. For the last several years, he's been on the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority as one of our trustees. He's actually been past chairman of that committee, and because of his resignation, I have an announcement. The following committee appointments are available. The Reno Tahoe Airport Authority Board of Trustees, one member for a partial term from present until June 30th of 2019. The qualifications, one, has, you have to have experience in aviation business or the tourism industry, two, experience in finance and accounting, or possess such other qualifications that the appointing authority determines are necessary or appropriate to carry out the duties of the board. Persons that are interested in serving on these, on this committee should complete a community service application available from the clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on Government. On the webpage, then under Boards and Commissions, click on Volunteering for Sparks Board or Commission, and then fill out the online application and submit. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Wednesday, the 29th of 2017. So, that'll round out the business.
Wednesday, the 29th of?
March.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Mr. Adams?
And item 9.9, did any of the council members wanna put a, ask the city manager to put an agenda item on for your next meeting concerning the proposed legislation to unilaterally amend our city charter?
Nothing's been filed yet, has it? I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about anything until it's been filed. That's my opinion.
Okay. I did receive a copy in paper just before I got here, so I'll distribute it to everyone. I don't, don't know what has been decided as to when. It will be heard, but the language is physically odd. I do not know what it says, 'cause I didn't get a chance to read it before it goes, so we'll get that out. Your legislative team has talked about this, and so, there is a possibility that we'll need to bring it before the entire board for conversation. The soonest we'd be able to do that is April 10th. The bill may be in motion by then, but we can at least bring some things forward, so we will discuss this at your legislative team on Wednesday morning, and then we'll take appropriate action related to the bill as quickly as possible and bring it to this body if that's what's determined by your legislative team.
My only response to that is, is that there's been no, no formal position taken by the legislative team on this, because there's been no formal council action. We don't know how quickly these things will go, so I would just say that might be prudent, seeing that language has passed or dropped on the agenda for your next meeting, so you could respond accordingly. You can always continue it or table it at that time.
So, when's the last day we can get it on the agenda, anyway? For next, for our next meeting?
Theoretically, you have to take a breath. Tomorrow's the deadline, but we know that this is out there, and so, knowing that we were gonna have a conversation at 11:00 on Wednesday, we were deferring what action based on what the language would say. So, your legislative team will look at it, and most likely, it gets brought forward, mainly because we know that there's a standing opposition to any changes in the charter that haven't gone through the charter committee. So, just by your platform itself would be disapproval of the action that's being presented. Now, the detail that's in it, obviously, we need to look at it, read it, and bring it forward. That'll be the point of discussion, so most likely, we'll have one or more legislative items on the 10th. This would be one of those one or more items that we would discuss, so that's the direction that I'm going for, the agenda for the 10th of April.
Our deadline is tomorrow, but we post the following Tuesday, and it would absolutely have to be on the agenda prior to posting.
That would be our intent.
Any other comments? Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.